To the second May meeting of the zoning board, Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-Pot 4, the Zoning Board of Adjustment is authorized to meet electronically. The City of Concord will use the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-Pot 4. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this Or dialing the following number and entering the following ID number at prompt: 1-929-205-6099. The webinar ID is 83431638063. Please enter your full name when logging in so attendance and minutes can be properly recorded. Note that telephone participation will be enabled at the end of each public hearing. All participants, please keep your phones and computers on mute unless it is your time to talk. Members of the public can also email questions or other public testimony to code@concordnh.gov, and staff will read the testimony or question into the record during the meeting. Any member of the public can also call the code, that is to say zoning administrative office, during the meeting at (603)230-3646 if they are unable to access the meeting and if assistance with connection is needed. Materials can be requested from the Zoning Board Administration Division by email or by calling and leaving a message at (603)225-8580. Meeting agendas and links to the cases can be accessed at wwwconcordnh.gov/280/zoning-for-of-adjustment. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we will take cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda. We have some variance requests tonight, and we also have some special exception requests. We will ask the appellant to offer, be sworn in and offer any testimony that he or she would like us to hear. We ask that that interview be kept as much as close as possible to 10 minutes. We will then ask if there is anyone who is interested in testifying in favor of the hearing, or, excuse me, in favor of the appeal, and anyone who is opposed will also have the opportunity to testify. We ask that members of the public, to the extent that they can, confine their testimony to five minutes. Following all of that, we'll check in with Code Enforcement to see if there are any further remarks from their office, and after the Code Enforcement remarks, if anything has come up that the appellant feels needs factual clarification, not new arguments, they will be given the opportunity to speak for a few minutes prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. Under most circumstances, the board will act, deliberate and act on each case before moving on to the next. Our first case this evening is 2021 Lisa Manning, Cross Fair. Applicant wishes to remove and replace a dilapidated 11-foot wide by 24-foot long hatch garage with an existing zero-foot side setback and an existing 17-foot rear setback, and requests the following: A variance to the Table of Dimensional Regulations permit a 14-foot wide by 22-foot long replacement structure with a zero-foot setback from the easterly side property line where a 10-foot side setback is required, and a variance to the Table of Dimensional Regulations permit a 14-by-22 replacement structure with an 18-foot six setback plus or minus from the southern rear property line where a 25-foot rear setback is required. All of this is at a property located at 11-13, that's 11-13 Carter Street, in an RN neighborhood residential district. Is anyone for Ms. Manning here to testify?
I'm not seeing any hands in the attendees. I do have two phone numbers. I don't know who those people are.
There was a Tim Prosper that was listed under the participants. I would have assumed that was...
I see Tim Prosper is logged on. He's on mute.
Mr. Prosper, are you...
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, I tell you, don't ever switch computers before you go on a Zoom meeting.
I've had, I've made that mistake. I won't do it again.
My...
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but?
I do.
Very good. Would you fill us in on why you feel the variances are appropriate?
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Ah, yes, I do, I did have an existing structure built in 1922, which was adequate. Unfortunately, it was built on grade or near grade, and it's gotten to the point where the sill is totally rotted, and the pictures, I hope, illustrate that the remainder of the structure is badly decayed, and repair was not a practical option. So, desires to replace the structure in entirety, adding on an additional four feet on the westerly side away from the property boundary to make it practical for use as a, as a car storage and an area to service a vehicle. I can add also, I did a, this is very informal, but I walked all of Carter Street and adjacent Kimball Street, and out of 22 houses on those addresses, I noted 17 that had similar structures that would be non-conforming as well. So, not atypical of what is, what is in the neighborhood now. The design that we have developed with help from a neighbor, an architect, is, I think, in keeping with the architecture of the home and the neighborhood, and I welcome comment from any neighbors or board members. I would like to do this in, in the best manner possible with everyone's input.
Is there a site plan for this, or is it going in exactly the same footprint as the existing one?
It's going in the same footprint, but there should be a planned view that is a, let's see, I think it's 11-by-17 document. Maybe it's rolled up?
You know, we got that. Apologies, I had it but didn't realize it.
Yeah, there's no easy way to attach that to the, to the application, unfortunately.
So, Mr. Prosper, let me just ask you this. You're basically making this a little bit smaller in length, but a little bit wider, and you're not encroaching any further into the setback. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Craig, do we have an aerial of Carter Street?
I'm, I'm sorry, I had, giving somebody instructions on how to connect.
Do you have an aerial of Carter Street for us?
Yeah, I'll be with you in a second.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm giving somebody instructions on how to connect to the meeting, so carry on. I'll be with you in a minute.
Are there question, other questions for Mr. Prosper?
Yeah, I, if I'm looking at the, I'm sorry, Chris, do you mind if I ask?
No, go ahead.
Uh, so I'm looking at the plans he proposes. It looks like the driveway is also right along the, the eastern boundary. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. There is no, unfortunately, we're unable to find a pin to, to use as a reference point for, no survey marker. So, I was advised by the city to use the corner of the sidewalk at the intersection of Carter and Broadway, measuring from that point the, and using the lot size, it comes right, the border comes right to the corner of my driveway.
Okay. And I'm assuming that driveway's been there as long as the garage, or?
As long as I have, at least.
Mr. Prosper, let me ask you something, and I think the aerial will confirm this. I believe, I know Carter Street pretty well. I believe your lot is one of the smallest lots on the street. Is that correct?
It's 66 feet wide, so yeah, I'm, I'm bounded on two sides from, there's a double lot to the east, and I guess the, to the west, it's not a double lot, but it is deeper. The home was originally a duplex when built, and then as a result of a fire, and I think 1937, it removed the top story and it was converted into a single family.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Prosper, is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Not that I can think of, but happy to answer any other questions you have.
Very good. Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Comments from Code Enforcement?
No, I don't have anything additional to add to this one.
Very good. With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We heard testimony that the appellant would like to rebuild an existing garage which is in the setback, and that he really hasn't got any place to put it that isn't in the setback. Going around the room, Ms. Scott, what do you think?
I think it's a reasonable request. I, I don't see how he could meet the setback requirements without totally destroying his property and making, you know, having to move the whole driveway. So, he's done as much as he could to limit any impact, and I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Andrew? Uh, we can't hear you. Andrew?
Sorry. I, I agree with what Laura said. I think we've been inclined generally to approve variance requests like this where a person is rebuilding in an established area that is consistent with the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I agree. And looking at the photos, I also agree with the description of it as a dilapidated garage, so.
Sadly so.
Yes. And as a consequence, I think, you know, it will appear improvement to the property in the neighborhood.
Yep. I agree with what all three other of our members said, and certainly, this is one example of where the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished by, by a new garage. So, with that, I'll, I'll move approval. Very good. I'm inclined to support the motion myself. Is there anyone who would like to second it?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, I guess I need to go around the room again. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Walder?
Aye.
Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And I so, also vote aye. The variances are granted.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome. The next case is Case 22-21 Donald Jewell for Woodpro Incorporated. The applicant wishes to develop an industrial zone property for outdoor warehousing and storage of storage trailers and commercial vehicles, and requests a variance to Article 28537b maximum area of lot to be used or designated for outside storage, permit the warehousing of storage and trailers and commercial vehicles on a lot with no building housing principal use, and to waive the restriction that outside storage is allowed only as a ratio of land area to building area of 1.3 to 1, which is the ratio of area outside storage to the gross floor area of the building on the lot which houses the principal use for property located at 39 Lock Road in an IN industrial district. We should note that the, prior, prior to the hearing, the, prior to hearing the case, the board must determine whether this request is materially different from, in substance or content than the request contained in Case Pot 27-19. And the request is, we should also note that the request is to allow only warehousing and storage on the property. The property is not proposed to be used for onsite retail sales or other customer-based activities. Is Mr. Jewell here?
And, Mr. Crowley, I will be muting myself for this case. If you have any questions, Mr. Hall will be able to address them for you.
Okay. Is Mr. Jewell here?
Mr. Chair, shouldn't we decide before we hear from the applicant if this is any different than the prior case, or is he going to explain that?
I'd like to have him explain to us why he thinks it is different.
Okay.
If he's here to do it. Chris, the other thing is, we've got the application from a week ago, and then today we got a revision, and perhaps we can get an explanation as to what the revision reflects compared to the original case from a week ago. Very good. Mr. Jewell, you with us?
I'm not seeing him in the attendee list, but I still have two phone numbers. See if someone's trying to say hello.
David, he said he was going to be calling in because he didn't have a computer, so he might be one of those phone calls.
All right. I clicked them both to unmute, but they've got to do something on their end. There he is. Nope, that's Darren. Darren Forehand just unmuted himself.
Are we having trouble connecting with Mr. Jewell?
It's not, it would appear so. So, if you want to move to the other case as we did before, and we'll see if he gets us to connect here.
All right. We'll come back to it. Let's go then to Case 2321 John Radley. The applicant wishes to convert a portion of an existing single-family detached dwelling, one accessory dwelling unit, accessory use A13, and requests a special exception from Article 2824k Table of Accessory Uses, and in accordance with the supplemental standards contained in Article 28552, single-family detached dwellings with one accessory dwelling unit for a property located at 10 Abbott Road in an RRS residential, single-family residential district. Mr. Radley, are you with us this evening? Oh, come on, let's see.
Can you hear me, sir?
You're here. I'm talking to you.
Mr. Radley?
Yes, sir.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but?
Yes, I do.
Please give us the details of why you feel the special exception is appropriate.
Well, basically, I might have sent us the first phase to get an accessory dwelling unit. I sent a memo to you, I hope you all got it. I have an elderly mother who's, has onset of dementia, and looking for to start moving with those, and that's my request and a special permit to start the, the restless stuff we have to do to make it accessible for her. That's about it.
Would you want to run briefly through the criteria for a special exception?
Myself, you mean, sir?
Yes.
Well, my understanding is the first phase of starting to get the accessory dwelling unit. The next phase would be building department, fire department, public safety, and do all the stuff that's required by those offices to get the permit for, to get the CO for that, because, you know, for the ADU.
Yeah, but what I was referring to was the criteria for a special exception that are listed in the ordinance that we're concerned with tonight.
I don't have that in front of me. I apologize for that. My understanding in New Hampshire, basically, you can apply for an ADU, a homeowner, and that they're authorized based on each town and city to what they want you to, you know, conform to.
Do you have your application with you?
I, I don't. I'm not, I'm not, I don't have that with me.
Okay. I tell you what, there's two or three questions here, more than two or three, but just a few. Let me read them to you, and if you want to give me a quick summary of your responses to them, that would be helpful to us.
Yes, sir.
Uh, will it create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety?
No, sir. I don't believe it would do that at all. There's no, no increase or thing. There's ample parking on the property, and it's, I, I don't see that happen at all.
Okay. Uh, will it be provided with adequate proper facilities and not overload any public or private water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system, nor will there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff onto adjacent properties or streets?
Okay, there'd be nothing out of the property. The building exists as, as right now. There'd be no other things outside. We're not increasing any, any extra runoff to any neighbors and to the street. So, I would say there's no, no excessive use of on the, on the city.
Uh, the requested use will not create excessive demand for municipal police, fire protection, schools, or solid waste disposal?
No, that will not, nothing will be increased by, for that at all.
Uh, will not create hazards to health, safety, or general welfare of the public, nor be detrimental to the use of or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood?
There'd be no change of the exterior of the building. I don't see any, any hazard at all to public safety.
It's an appropriate location because?
It's, 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 it's not increasing the size of the lot, not, I mean, the house, it's in, it's all inside the house. It's the same. Nothing's changing. Sorry, I think that's...
It's not possible to get through one of these without repeating yourself. I know I've done it.
Sorry.
Consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance and the master plan?
Why, I know what, what Concord needs a lot. We need housing in Concord, period. We need housing everywhere, so this is going to make a simple place to live.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
That's it, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Craig, do you have any comments?
No, I don't. It's, it appears to be a well-traveled street. It's a, you know, high traffic. It's not going to be out of character with the area, so. Nothing else like that.
With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request for a special exception to convert a section of a building to an ADU on Abbott Road. Nick? Mr. Walder, how do you, how do you see this one?
Uh, since it's a special exception, it appears that he meets all the criteria that you, that you elaborated on, so I don't see any issues with the request.
Andrew?
Yeah, he obviously needed a little prodding, but I think with, you know, under your questioning, he established the criteria based on his statements, and we've heard no evidence to the contrary, so I, I agree.
I'm notorious for my brilliant cross.
It's not too late to give a school.
Ms. Scott?
I have no concerns or questions. I think it's appropriate use or location for an accessory dwelling unit.
Mr. Monahan?
Yeah, I agree with what's said. I think under the questioning, the applicant touched all the bases on, on what we're looking for, for ADUs, so I'm fine with it.
I agree with my colleagues. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? In that case, we'll go around the room. Mr. Monahan?
I vote yes.
Mr. Walder?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So, the special exception is, is it one or two? Just one. Special exception is granted.
Thank you, and thank you. Sorry I wasn't prepared. Thank you for the, the guidance.
Yeah, you're welcome. Do we have anybody from Woodpro? Has anyone shown up yet? David?
Um, not that I know of. The same numbers are there. Are you trying to unmute? We've left a message. Both Craig and I both called Mr. Jewell, left a voicemail, so I think we press on, sir. We've left a message. Both Craig and I both called Mr. Jewell, left a voicemail. So I think we press on, sir.
All right. In that case, we will move on to case twenty-four, twenty-one. Peter J. Minor, Jr. and Sarah A. Minor. The applicants wish to use an accessory building, which is a garage, in conjunction with an off premises occupation to service and repair mechanical equipment and request the following. A special exception from Article twenty-eight to four K table of accessory uses. And in accordance with supplemental standards, Article twenty-eight, five, thirty-one, use of a portion of a dwelling or accessory building in conjunction with an off premises occupation. A special exception from Article twenty-eight, two, four K table of accessory uses. And in accordance with the supplemental standards, Article twenty-eight, seven, seventeen, parking of commercial vehicles to allow the use and storage of a commercial vehicle as an accessory to a principal residential dwelling for use in conjunction with an off-site occupation. All this for property located at eighty-seven Chaker Road in an R M residential medium density district. Is either Mr. Minor or Ms. Minor with us this evening?
Yes, we're both here.
Do you both plan to testify?
Attorney Matthew Johnson should be speaking on behalf of us. And if any other questions come up, we'll be here.
Well, in that case, why don't I swear you all in? Do you all swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes, we do.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, are you speaking at first?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Do you need to share a screen, Mr. Johnson?
I'm sorry?
Do you need to share your screen?
No, I do not.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. So this request by the applicants is for a special exception, use of a portion of dwelling or an accessory building there too, conjunction with an off premises occupation by a resident trade person. And the article, to go through just the parts of that article, just to confirm that we're in compliance with that, no external changes are permitted. The applicants don't intend to change anything with their dwelling or the garage that's attached. No outdoor storage is allowed. The applicants do not plan on storing any parts, tools, materials, goods, or equipment outdoors. The limitation on parking of commercial vehicles is limited to one commercial vehicle, which that is exactly what the applicants have is one commercial vehicle. And the prohibition of certain activities for fabrication, manufacturing, repair, sales, delivery, shipping of goods or products. The applicants are not doing any of those activities. Now, it does say repair. This is a, the miners business is an off-site business where repairs to large equipment are done off-site at people's properties with, you know, if they have a large farming equipment or say a bobcat or some, some large bulldozer. Repairs on equipment such as that are done off-site. That is a bulk of the business. What they're seeking to do is at the actual, in the garage, is small homeowner residential maintenance and service on things like weed whacker, leaf blowers, things of that nature. So it's not necessarily repairs. It's more general maintenance and service on small items such as that. And the last prohibition is the property should not be used as a base of operations for employees to report for workers, a point of dispatch. That won't be the case here. Mr. Minor is the employee. He doesn't have other employees who are coming and going or anything of that nature. If you'd like me to address the criteria, I'm happy to do that.
Why don't you give us a brief rundown on those?
Sure. With regard to traffic congestion, the, any equipment that would be dropped off at the property would be very limited. It would be by appointment only and it would only be during regular business hours. Again, this is a small portion of their business. I believe the applicant ran the numbers and the busiest month, it was about thirty-five percent of their actual business was performed at the property. So again, a large majority of the, of the work is actually done off-site. So it's pretty limited as to what is, what is being dropped off of the property. Again, it's not a high volume type of thing where cars are going in and out. Adequate and proper facilities and will not overload any public or private water drainage or sewer. The proposed limited use of this property doesn't call for any additional water or sewage. It's not going to be, there's no alteration of the building. It's not going to add any impervious materials to the property. Any equipment is stored indoors. So there's, there's no runoff of anything that's outside. There's no excessive demand for police or fire protection. It's not going to create any additional solid waste. It's not an inherently dangerous business by any means. So it would not call for any excessive police or fire. Along the same lines, it doesn't create any hazard to the health or safety or general welfare of the public. The limited use isn't detrimental or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood because any materials or equipment will be stored inside the garage. The work performed onsite is limited in nature, limited in amount, limited to regular business hours and limited to being indoors as well. It is appropriate for the location because it's in compliance with Article twenty-eight, five, thirty-one. And for all the prior stated reasons, it's not going to cause any, any traffic issues. It's not going to strain on municipal services. It's not going to create additional wastewater or draw water. It's not going to require additional fire or police services. And it's consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance and master plan because it allows the property owner a usable, a reasonable use of the property. It doesn't violate or offend any of the ordinance's conditions. And the use, again, the use by special exception would be in compliance with all the conditions within Article twenty-eight, five, thirty-one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does either Mr. or Ms. Minor wish to make any remarks?
We'd be happy to answer questions you guys might have at this time.
All right. Are there questions from the board?
I have a question. So, Mr. Johnson, if I recall, you were not representing the miners at the time of the last, at the last request, but can, do you have a sense of what's the distinction between this request and the one that we declined last time around? I think it was a couple of months ago.
Yes, so I did not represent the miners at the time. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear.
Okay. I did not represent the miners at that time. That was a variance request. They were seeking a major home occupation. I, I think that application was, was incorrect for what they're actually trying to do here. I agree. I, I understand that the variance was denied. But again, that was for a home occupation where this is really an off-site occupation. The majority of the work is done off-site. And really the, the repair type work and the large machinery work is done off-site. General small maintenance and, and service is what they're looking to do within a garage. And I think that's best classified for the special exception under Article twenty-eight, five, thirty-one. Everything that they're, what they're seeking to do complies with, with all of those requirements. They did have a sign at the property for the business. That's been taken down. They understand that that's, that's not part of what's allowed under the special exception. And that's fine. Otherwise, everything is in compliance. I think the, the application would have been best suited as a special exception here.
I have a question. So where, where is the primary location of the business that the majority of the work will occur?
That's a customer's, client's properties. So for instance, you know, Mr. Minor drives all over the state to make repairs on large equipment, which is, which is the majority of the work that's done. That is not done at, at the house. That's not going to be done there.
Thank you. Is there any equipment on that property now that's outdoors that is not there for the use of the miners?
There is not, but I can, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Minor are here. They can attest to that as well. I know that some pictures were submitted and I spoke with the miners about each piece of equipment. And, you know, they had a couple of lawnmowers outside. There is a trailer outside. There was a tractor. All of those things are theirs. There was a tractor that is no longer there. That, that's been moved. So it's not at the property. Everything else in the pictures is, is theirs. There's some bicycles in the pictures, I think a plow. Those are their belongings.
Very good. Other questions from the board? Ms. Scott?
I have a question for Attorney Johnson. I just want to make sure I understand that you're saying maintenance and service of equipment is not the same thing as repair of equipment. I'm not a mechanical person. I don't repair, maintain, or service anything. I want to make sure I understand that you're differentiating maintaining and servicing items is different than repairing items.
Well, yes, I, I believe that the prohibited activities, when read as a whole, fabrication, manufacturing, repair, I mean, it's, it's not a body shop. Major repairs on a bulldozer or something like that is not done on the premises. If somebody has a weed whacker that needs general maintenance, then that's something that would, that would be done potentially at the garage because a person could, could drop it off and that's something they could, they could do right at their house. They wouldn't have to make a service call for that. So yes, I, I do think there's a distinction. It's, they're not repairing. I think of a repair more as, or I think the intent of, of the article is to prevent a junkyard from forming with a bunch of broken down things and someone's trying to piece together things and, and build a Frankenstein lawnmower out of twenty different lawnmowers. That's not what, what's happening. Again, a small piece of equipment that needs a regular tune-up or something.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So can you talk a little bit more to the second item we're asking for with regards to storage of commercial vehicles since, at the location?
There is a commercial vehicle and I believe with the application, the applicant submitted a plan. I think they had to show where the commercial vehicle would be parked. Do you have that with the application?
I'm looking for it. Craig, was that in the packet?
Yeah, on the map, it's, is that labeled service truck?
Yes. I'm not sure what kind of truck that is, but I'm sure the applicant's good answer if there are particular questions about that.
Yeah, I'm just, and this may be a code. I'm just trying to get a better sense of the, why is this? Why is the special exception necessary?
Craig, could you fill us in on that?
Yeah, I apologize. I was on the phone for the beginning of the hearing and I missed, was there a discussion of whether or not the special exception was even necessary in this case?
Yeah, it wasn't discussed.
It had to do with the truck.
Okay.
It's a second special exception request.
Right.
I'm sorry.
The, the truck, the, the truck, as it says, "Commercial vehicle used in off-premises may only be parked on the property in accordance with the provisions of twenty-eight, seven, seventeen." And twenty-eight, seven, seventeen, I believe, says, parking of commercial vehicles, residential districts, residential uses is required by a special exception. And if you look under the table of accessory uses, accessory to a principal residential use, it is allowed in this zoning district, but by special exception. So otherwise, a commercial vehicle wouldn't be able to be stored on-site.
What defines, how do you define a commercial vehicle as opposed to somebody's pickup truck?
There is a definition in the glossary. You like? I could read it for you.
Yeah, if you don't mind. I have exactly the same question Chris had. If this is, what's the difference?
So a, a commercial vehicle. Here, I'll even. There. A, a motor vehicle or trailer, not including a residence personal vehicle that is modified to accommodate a disability, a recreational vehicle or recreational equipment, or a vehicle used exclusively for agricultural or farming when located on an accessory to a permitted agricultural use that exhibits one or more of the following characteristics. So this is what defines a commercial vehicle. It has more than two axles. It has a height greater than seven feet. And these are all or, has a weight greater than eleven thousand five hundred pounds gross vehicle weight, or is registered as other than passenger antique or street rod vehicle and is designed, maintained, or used primarily for the transportation of passengers, property, or freight for hire, compensation, or profit, or has special ramps, hoists, hooks, buckets, cranes, arms, platforms, or similar features designed primarily to lift, tow, or carry motor vehicles, equipment trailers, materials, or workers. So any truck that is designed for a commercial purpose and licensed with a commercial plate would essentially be considered a commercial vehicle then.
Thank you. So I'm wondering, can the applicant, what's the, what's, does the, does a vehicle that the applicant wants to have on-site meet those criteria?
Yes, it does, Mr. Monahan. It's a two thousand six Ford F-four fifty. It has a G V W of sixteen thousand pounds. The current height on the truck is eight foot, six inches. I have a three thousand pound crane on it and an air compressor onboard.
And I guess a couple of other questions I had. I think it was a letter from the Rhodesian Tarbell law firm. And I think they're trying to suggest, and I think I kind of agree with the concept that really what's before us has nothing to do with the off-site work that the, at least item one, has nothing to do with the off-site work that the business undertakes. It's more focused on the, the activity that will take place on-site. So I just want to put aside all the consideration about going off to people's farms and construction sites to work on the thing and get a better understanding of. construction sites to work on the thing and get a better understanding of, um, what's taking place, uh, in the garage. It sounds, I, I'm, the, um, I just don't know what constitutes kind of the, the small equipments being described. And I was a little concerned about the, the, the letter they talked about, the, that addresses the volume of waste oil, uh, that the business produces on site. So can I get a better sense of the nature of the equipment that you want to be repairing in the garage?
Yes, Mr. Monahan. Um, if it's okay with you, Mr. Uh, Johnson, I'll answer this.
Wait a minute, I, I need to interrupt here for a second. Again, I missed the beginning of this. Um, this special exception does not permit any on-site repair. Uh, this is strictly for work off-site. Um, the garage may be used to store some materials, equipments that may be ancillary or, um, accessory to the business. But no, if, you know, for a carpenter using their garage, they could not construct cabinets or other things. Use the garage as a workshop. Um, this is, special exception is strictly for off-site work.
Can they, it?
That was the question I had asked, yes.
And I was looking at the language of twenty-eight-five-thirty-one. It says you, you can't, the special exception does not allow reman- fabrica- fabrication, manufacturing, repair, et cetera. It doesn't, I think what Laura was getting at, that I'm just wrapping my head around, is it, it doesn't exclude maintenance, but...
That's, well, again, the ordinance, and this is not the place to interpret the, the, the ordinance really. And reading things into an ordinance that haven't been specifically put there is not the best way, or not actually the proper way to, um, interpret an ordinance. So you just go with the plain language as it is written.
Kim, you had another question?
It had to do with why they're storing waste oil on site.
Whenever we are completed with a service, when we go out to someone's house and do their repairs or whatever they need, um, we bring it back. There is a letter in there from a Kenneth Brown who does pick up all of it. Um, he has picked up multiple times. We usually do calls for it whenever we get to twenty-five gallons is usually when we get to, which is five, um, gallon buckets, so the Home Depot gallon buckets essentially. He picks them up, he brings them because he burns them, um, at his actual body shop, and then he returns them empty.
Other questions from board members? Very good. Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I don't believe so.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to? Mr. M- is Mr. Mokel here?
We do have some letters. I have a letter from Alan and Jean Gray of, uh, eighty-eight Shaker Road. They, uh, indicate that they have no issues or concerns about them opening a small business across the road from our home. We wish them best of luck. Uh, and they indicated that they had no objection to the appeal. They cited it as a variance. It's actually a special exception.
Mr. Chair, there's a Doug Hicks that would like to speak also.
I beg your pardon?
There's a Doug Hicks that would like to speak out of the attendees.
All right. Mr. Hicks, why don't you step forward and swear to tell the truth on nothing but their butt?
I do.
What would you like us to know?
Um, I thought Mr. Mokel would be here tonight, but his letter is probably sufficient. But I wanted to make, get some clarity on what's happening within the garage. Uh, the last application was for small engine repair. This is essentially the same thing. It's no different. Um, the only difference is they took the sign down. But I don't believe this application is, or, or the property is appropriate for small engine repair. And it pretty much, it's a duck. It walks like a duck. It quacks like a duck. It's still a duck. I don't know what ordinance they're putting it under, um, but it is still small engine repair. And that's what I'm opposed to. Uh, and I'm also concerned that if they decide to leave the property, that these rights will transfer to, to someone else. So there's essentially a build, a business, um, forever on this property. If this is allowed, I'm not sure if that's the case, but that's a major concern.
It is the case, it, it, uh, a special exception would go with the property.
Well, that's, that's my major concern. Um, you know, this, this is a nice family trying to do a good thing, trying to, trying to make a living. Um, but it's just not an appropriate place for small engine repair and the kind of things they're doing. Parking their truck there and going to work and coming home, uh, I really don't have any issue with that, uh, even though it's a commercial vehicle. But they are running a business on this property, uh, regardless what they're saying. And it's over one-third of their operation. And who's to say it wouldn't be fifty or a hundred percent of their operation at some point? That's really my concern. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions for Mr. Hicks? Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in opposition? I'll go back to the letters then. We do have a letter from Frederick Meckel of Taravell and Brodich, who has, this letter's been referred to earlier in the evening, indicating that, uh, this is for an off, special exception is for an off-premises occupation. As others have observed, they are testifying to the effect that some of this would be on premises. They also indicate that, uh, they're asking for permission to continue doing something which they are already doing, which is in violation of the ordinance. And the letter included some photographs showing equipment and so forth, uh, which Mr. Johnson also referred to. We have another letter from, uh, Brenda Perkins, Realtor, eighty-seven Shaker Road, concerning eighty-seven Shaker Road. Uh, she indicates that, um, the, she's confident that interest in the properties in the Shaker Road area would not be affected by this business. We also have an email from Debbie Partif, who is in, oh, ninety-two Shaker Road. She included some photographs of some equipment on the land. Um, she indicates that, uh, they were denied a request to run a small engine business, as we know. She indicates that they, uh, ignore the rules and wonders who is going to, um, mon- monitor them if this appeal is allowed. She believes they do not intend to keep all the equipment contained in their garage because there is not enough room. I believe that covers it for letters. Did I leave anything out, Craig?
Did you, there, there was a letter in there too from, um, Matthew Johnson, but he's already spoken, I believe.
Yes, I did not read through Attorney Johnson's letter because he did speak.
Very good. No, I have nothing additional to add beyond that.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll, uh, uh, offer the appellate, the opportunity to offer factual clarification in response to anything they've heard.
Uh, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak again. Um, as for the numbers, I ran them personally, and we do a ton of mobile services, and I understand that's not being addressed, Mr. Monahan. I, I'm not trying to, um, step over what you said. What we do have currently is weed whacker, edger, um, a tractor, one of those, um, lawnmower tractor. Um, so I'm not talking anything big. Uh, the pictures that were submitted by our neighbor across the street, um, were our own property. We own several lawnmowers. We have a child who has his own business of lo- mowing lawns in the neighborhood. So he has his own, um, so there are several lawnmowers, pushmowers, all that stuff because he does his own stuff within our church and along, um, the neighborhood. And he has his own equipment for kind of learning how to use stuff. Um, we do have a trailer up that, there that's ours. We have our own John Deere tractor with all of the accessories to go with it. Um, so there is a ton of equipment that were photos that she had taken, um, but the majority of them are already ours. Um, there is a Cub Cadet actually in the front that is actually Mr. Gray's and asked us to service it, um, which has been taken care of. Um, that was one of the photos she also had taken a picture and submitted. We did remove the sign when we were told we, you know, we weren't able to get the variance. We're not trying to disrespect anyone. My husband and I are both service-connected veterans, trying to keep three children alive, um, and them returning back to work. My husband is a Purple Heart recipient from his injuries, and he cannot, when he lost his job last year, it made it very difficult for him to find work. So he was suggested to start his own business, and that's why we did. Um, and like I submitted before or stated before, um, we, we, we did all the paperwork with the state and, you know, got all that, and the Chamber of Commerce, we didn't know we had to submit it with the city or we would have done that first. That was brought up before, that we just threw a, a business, and that wasn't it. If we had known, we're both police in the military, we're both service, we're both war veterans. We wouldn't have disrespected the city that we live in. That's not our intention, or, or the board, that's not our intention either. We're just trying to survive and provide, and my husband trying to provide, um, for our family. There's no other employees, it's just the two of us. Uh, so I do all the numbers, and he is the one who goes out and does everything. So that equipment that's on that service vehicle is so that he can lift because of his injuries to his body. Um, he has equipment on there so he can do the air compressors, he can do repairs and such like that. At homes, we, he is out several days a week. We only do about eight to ten days a month here at the house, um, because the majority of it is out in the community throughout the state. You know, he's out in Wolfboro this week, he's been in Gulfstown and, um, Pembroke and so on and so forth. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. Uh, we've heard testimony that the miners would like to get a special exception, two different special exceptions. One, to keep the truck on site in support of their business, and another to allow them to, uh, operate the business out of the home. Starting with Ms. Scott, how do you view this?
Um, first, I just, I would like the two special exceptions to be acted on separately.
Yes, we will.
I think they're very different. Um, for the, the special exception to have the commercial vehicle parked on site, I have no concerns with that. There's plenty of room on the site. Um, it's for off-site purposes, off-site business uses, so I, I don't have any concerns. I am not in support of having, uh, the special exception for doing work on site. There is no difference in my mind between maintenance and servicing equipment and repairing equipment. Repairing of equipment is not allowed, um, per the special exception criteria. Um, so again, I know that, um, the applicants may feel there's a difference between, and I'm sure there is, between what they're doing off-site and on-site, but the ordinance does not make a distinction between major repairs and minor repairs, a weed whacker versus a major piece of equipment. So I am not in support of that special exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Winters? I, um, agree with most of what Laura said. I, I, I agree as far as variance too, that they, you know, they meet the criteria, in my opinion, to store one commercial vehicle outdoors. Um, I think, you know, what I would be willing to permit, but it's not what they're asking for. What I would be willing to permit for variance one, if they had a more modest request, would be, you know, indoor storage of their own equipment and their own tools, and maybe their own accessories, you know, parts and whatnot that were necessary to service the actual work. But they're, they're clearly, you know, by their own statements, want to do some work there. So I, you know, if they, if they had a much more narrow request with regard to variant, uh, exception, I'm sorry, special exception one, I might, you know, be more inclined to look at it. But, you know, based on what they're asking for, I think, um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm disinclined. I, I do thank, uh, the miners for their service, and I, I understand the predicament they're in, you know, being, trying to be entrepreneurs, and I appreciate that, but I just don't think they meet the criteria on number one.
Mr. Curley, if I may, uh, jump in?
Yeah, second. Well, I, I, again, I, I'm confused here about this discussion on them doing work and maintenance on anything at the property. Uh, this special exception is solely for doing work and maintenance off the property. Um, that provision under the ordinance was written for professional tradespeople, um, to be able to store materials and equipment on their site. And if, as I said before, you could have, and as it says in the provision, it talks about carpenters, painters, plumbers, masons, um, and people, and other people skilled in industrial arts. So the purpose of the garage or, you know, the, the home would be to run the office, keep records and do things of that nature. But the garage or someplace of that nature could be used to store, uh, your equipment, uh, carpet or goods, store lumber or materials in there, but is not to provide a workshop or an area for somebody to do work at that location. That was the variance that was requested last week, and there are special exceptions that might allow something, you know, along those lines. But that's not what's before the board tonight. What is before to, the board tonight, and this needs to be clear for the applicant too, is strictly for off-site work. You can store your vehicle there, you can store parts and things of that nature on the property, but you can't repair vehicles or equipment at that location. Sorry, Laura?
Right, that was my point, that it, that's not what the special exception allows, but that's what the applicant stated they were going to do. That may have been what part you missed because you were helping someone log on. They said they were going to be helping to service and maintain equipment, not repair equipment on site.
And, and, and that was not my understanding of what they, how they were advised that this was to be applied, and it was not a discussion that, uh, we had with them previously that I am aware of.
But the, the very first sentence of the application, the property owner seeks to utilize a portion of the accessory building at the property for mechanical repairs of equipment. So they're...
That's what it says.
By their own statement, I mean, I don't, if they want to, if there's a way for them to modify this to be, you know, so they can store their materials, I, you know, that's up to them. But just based on what they're asking for, they're not...
Well, it, it, Mr. Winters, they would have needed to request a variance from a different section. This is a section that was presented to them as being their option after their variance was denied the last time. Um, we talked to them, and the variance the last time was to allow this type of activity on the site. That was denied. This was strictly to allow them another option to do something different. If they misrepresented or, you know, incorrectly put something on the application, it's immaterial because it's not something that's legitimately before the board then.
Oh, that's the, there's the question in my mind, Craig. We have a, a bit of a conundrum here. I don't remember this happening anytime in the recent past where we have an applicant. Typically, we say that the applicant, whatever the applicant says he's going to do is what, if we grant, he's allowed to do. Now, in this case, they're stating in the application that they want to do something that would require a variance, not a special exception. And we've already been through that with them.
Well, I, 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 oh, sorry, go ahead.
Let me finish my question, just so I understand this, in case I have to explain it, uh, and a quiz on Thursday. So given that situation, is the board empowered to grant a special exception for something they're not asking for? Or is it empowered to grant a special exception but rule out one of the things they have clearly asked for in their application? Or is the board more, as I, I see my fellow board members drifting, and I'm inclined to think this myself, to say, what you're asking for is not a special exception, so we're not going to grant a special?
so we're not going to grant a special exception?
Uh, the board can only act on what was noticed and advertised. Um, and it was my understanding that this is what they were, um, requesting. Um, I don't know where the, uh, mistake came into play. Uh, Mr. Nato has been talking to, we may have had a miscommunication there. But, um, I, my understanding is Mr. Nato had clearly explained to them that, you know, this was their only option.
Okay.
We had, we had 12 cases last month. I didn't read, I have to admit, I did not read
I'm not, I'm not criticizing anything that anybody's done here. I'm just trying to figure out what we should do.
Well, I, I would say if there is confusion at this point in time, the best bet would be to table the application, um, and, you know, for clarification on exactly what they are asking for. And then, um, what they, uh, need to request re- relief from then. Our understanding was
If we deny it, i- i- if we just flat out deny it, can they reapply for a special exception that, you know, a- actually meets the standard?
Well, you can only apply for a special exception that is specifically allowed and defined in the zoning ordinance.
But, but I mean, if we deny it, are they, are they then barred from reapplying? Because they, they, they've, you know, we've already denied them once? Or can they reapply for some, you know, a, a use that meets the standard? Because it's a different application now?
Well, if they were applying for the same thing, if you denied it and they came back with the same request, you would have to make a determination of whether or not you should hear it again. Because you don't want people coming back to the board with the same request over and over again. Um, but if they came back and they were requesting a variance from something different, a different article, yeah, they, it would be a whole new case in that, that case situation.
Okay, I think we've, uh, I think we, we can go over this a little bit more if we need to in discussion, but I think I see where we might be headed. Uh, let's see, we had Laura had spoken. Who else? Did anyone else have a chance to talk?
I, I spoke. I, I don't need to talk to you.
Okay. Andrew's spoken. Uh, Jim, what are your thoughts?
Uh, yeah, well, Laura's overall, I think, let's take these separately. And then as to the confusion over what's being asked for, I'm inclined to just deny item one, so that if the applicant does come back, it's a clean record. You know, we're not relitigating what was or wasn't in the applications. And I, I just think it's, um, a preferable way to proceed.
All right. And Nick, how do you look at it?
Well, I'm fine with the second special exception request, but with the first one, um, um, I'm all for an off-premise occupation if, if indeed that's all it is. But because in their application, it does state that they're going to do onsite mechanical repairs of equipment, um, we definitely are in a, in this situation. I'm not sure how we're going to deal with it.
Okay, uh, I'm in, my view of this is, I, I agree with everybody that the second, the request for the truck is perfectly reasonable. And they've demonstrated that they're fine as far as meeting the criteria. It seems to me that the first application, the special exception, is defective. There's, there's something in it that it shouldn't be there. It, it pollutes the whole question. So from my point of view, uh, rather than acting on it, I would just as soon table it or, uh, and let the, them reconstruct their application so that it is not effective as opposed to denying it. Now, I think the net effect probably would be about the same. Because if we deny and they come back with a different application that is not effective, it's a whole new case. But that's just the way I look at it as a matter of procedure. Uh, not going to go to the mat on it either way, but that's how I see it. Uh, with that, would, let's go, let's do the easy part first and deal with special exception number two. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on special exception number two? All right, we'll go around the room. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
And Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That special exception is granted. And now, uh, would anyone care to make a motion on the subject of special exception number one of any sort?
I'll make a motion to deny.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it with the reason being that, uh, repairs are not allowed under the special exception. And they have stated in their application and in their testimony tonight, that is what they're planning to do. So it does not meet the criteria.
Very good. Is, is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I tend to lean more towards, uh, tabling it.
Very good. All right, we'll go around the room with a vote on the motion, starting with Mr. Monahan.
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Wallner?
Nay.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
And I vote nay for the same reason as Mr. Wallner. Uh, with that, the motion carries and the special exception is denied. Which brings us to what may be our last case this evening unless, um, we'll get two more, 25, 21 and 26, 21.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Right, sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, Mr., um, yeah, Mr. Jewell is on the line. Um, trying to get him unmuted.
All right, why don't we go back to that case then?
Yeah, so you take that and I'm muting out.
Was there more material that was sent out? Nick, you mentioned you got something today on this case. I haven't gotten anything.
Robert Nato sent us a two or three emails with several PDFs attached to it.
I was unloved. I did not get any documents.
Laura, I actually relinked it to the agenda and sent the agenda out also. So there was an extra link to that agenda with the info.
When did you send that?
This morning.
I didn't get it.
Oh, for goodness sakes. Sorry.
Did it go to the other Laura?
I see you, I see you, I see you on the list, Laura. I, maybe check your spam.
I didn't, I did check my spam when I heard Nick say that. I never got it.
Are you, you have email there now? I can forward it to you.
Yes, I have my, I have my email.
I just, I just sent it. I see the problem, I see the problem that he didn't put the underscore in your
Oh, it went to the other Laura Scott, somewhere in the world that gets all my email. Okay.
Yeah. And she is wondering what kind of a life you lead too.
Did you receive it, Laura?
Not yet.
All right, well, why don't we, uh, why don't we begin with, with Mr. Jewell's testimony? And, uh, we can address the add-ons to the application before we, before we deal with the, closing the hearing. Mr. Jewell, are you with us?
He is unmuted. His phone is active.
Mr. Jewell?
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Jewell. Yes, I can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Oh, thank the Lord. All right.
Well, we're all so relieved. Uh, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, sir.
Would you please fill us in on the reasons why you believe that your appeal should be granted?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The point does that, could he explain to us why we have an original proposal? And then we have a revised proposal, what the difference might be? Because there is a little bit of difference in the language.
All right, uh, perhaps you could include that in your discussion, Mr. Jewell?
Certainly, Chairman. I, um, just wanted to narrow the, uh, request because, um, I felt it better fit, uh, the actual, um, need for the property. And that is strictly warehousing and, and, uh, placing and parking of the trailers there. Um, any, any sales activity, there is not a part of what needs to be done there. So I felt originally that perhaps that was a appropriate description, but having the opportunity to resubmit, um, I felt I, I was, um, better describing and more accurately the, um, nature of, of my needs and, and use.
Would you fill us in on why you believe the variance should be granted?
Well, I certainly will, um, address the, uh,
The legislature.
I bought the property, um, in June 28th of 02. And that at that time, because of the potential development at 287 South Main Street. Um, and I intended to build a new manufacturing production facility there. And then when the project that was proposed at 287 South Main Street fell through, uh, I was invited to remain there. So I, I did per, had purchased the land already. And knowing that the land I purchased on Lock Road was available for any of my needs at that time, uh, whether it was storage or, or building or whatever, um, in whole or part. Um, and it already had a driveway entrance and a culvert put in and it was turnkey in a little, in, in some ways. I, I felt I had that as sort of a safety if I needed to go there. But I did stay at 287 South Main. And then subsequently, the great recession struck in 08 and, and derailed my building plan entirely. And then, uh, 287 South Main was sold around 2010 to Concord Steam Associates. And I was forced to relocate during that great recession to, uh, another building, uh, from the 20,000 square foot building that I had occupied for almost 20 years there. And that was a considerable undertaking under the great, under, during that recession and, um, and, and also that, uh,
Mr. Jewell, could I steer, could I steer you to the five criteria for a variance? The history is, I'm sure important to you, but unfortunately it doesn't help us make a decision here.
Okay, well, um, anyway, okay. Well, at about that time, um, when I was forced to move and, and, and then the city of Concord passed the ordinance many years after I purchased the property on Lock Road, requiring a building on the property that houses the principal use to have outside storage. Now, due to the combination of two things, my business has had to downscale. The pandemic forced me to adjust how I operated Woodpro Incorporated. And, and the second thing, the, the building that housed my business at 287 South Main was razed. So I had to place everything into storage trailers. I was able to obtain space off Langdon Street, uh, temporarily to store the, the trailers and equipment and vehicles. Due to proposed development there now in the Langdon Street area, I have been told to relocate. Because the ordinance changed my ability to use it for my need, uh, I warehousing and storage, uh, was hijacked by that ordinance. And hence, my application for variance is before this board tonight for consideration. I have been paying taxes on the property for almost 20 years. I had paid $81,000 approximately in taxes. And I submitted a document from the email from the, uh, Merrimack County Savings Bank to support that testimony. And I hope to use it for a use that is otherwise allowed in the industrial district and which is fully consistent with other uses in most businesses in the area. So given the fact I've owned the property since June of 2002, the change of ordinance hijacked my, I, my outright ability to do it, uh, to use it as I need to. And I'm trying to, to keep my business in Concord where I started it in 1992. And now it's been here almost 30 years. So I, 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 I mean, that's my testimony.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Jewell?
I have a quick question. Uh, Mr. Jewell, can you tell us how this request is materially different from, uh, the case that we heard in 2019?
In 2019, we, I had thought that there could be some sales activity and there was a misunderstanding about the, about that zone. Because long ago, when I was looking at building there, I bu- I had recalled that I thought that there was some, uh, provision for a certain amount of square footage to be used for, uh, retail activity. And so because even though I wasn't going to build a building, I thought that there might have been the ability to, you know, wholesale or, or retail, um, some products and lumber from that, uh, location. But I was subsequently, subsequently corrected about that and realized that there is no such activity allowed, uh, at least on the retail end. And I wouldn't even be doing it on the wholesale side either. So, um, yeah, and I, and I think that it is, that, uh, I'm addressing the fact that, uh, a considerable amount of taxes has entailed the years to this point. And I don't think that was emphasized at the time. But largely it's the, it's the proposed use, just simply, um, warehousing and storage. No sales.
Thank you. So the questions from the board? All right, I think before we go any further, fellow board members, we
I'm sorry, I did have a question for the applicant. So is the trailer, the storage trailers that you want to leave on the property, is there, do you have products that you're storing inside those or is it just the trailers?
The trailers contain equipment that was removed from the building that has been razed.
So is it unused manufacturing equipment or it's just, I don't, is it going to be stored there?
It is, it is, yes, yes. A wide variety of, of woodworking equipment and machinery, uh, that has no immediate uh, use and, and, and indefinite use at this time. As I said, the pandemic did have, I had to adjust the way I was operating my business on the result of the raising of the building. You know, this, this resulted in the need for the trailers to put these surplus equipment in.
Any other questions from the board?
Other, does the equipment have fuel or oils or any? Um, is it just big pieces of steel equipment? I just don't have, I just cannot picture what would be in these trailers.
Yeah, largely just steel, uh, uh, equipment, plastic, steel. And they're electrically, you know, operated, um, when, you know, when they're properly connected to electrical service.
Okay, thanks.
If there are no other questions, I think the board, uh, should, we'll want to move on to the question of whether or not we have a new appeal before. That was note number one in the agenda. Uh, Craig, can you give us any, uh, information about the previous appeal that we ought to have?
Um, Mr. Curley, Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak to that as Craig is asked to be
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yep.
So in reviewing the case previously, uh, the main point of difference, which, um, Mr. Jewell mentioned was previously he thought he would possibly do some sales off that site. And he has come to understand that, that he does not want to do that. He basically is just looking for the authorization to store some trailers on there that would be authorized had he had a building built. But because he doesn't have a building, he just wants to store the, the trailers there. So that answers your first question as to the, is there a material difference? That's up to the board to decide. Uh, but the main point of difference is he will not be doing any type of sales off of that site or retail operation.
Do you happen to have the date we heard that original?
It was 2019.
Can you help me on that one?
Does anyone have that?
June of last year.
June, thank you.
June of last year?
No, the year before, I'm sorry.
2019, okay. June of 2019, we heard it, okay.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I could just add, I know you're asking the question regarding the difference of the two cases.
Yes.
Should the board move forward and allow this storage? He will have to still go to planning for a minus site plan review and meet the requirements of the site for fencing and, um, barriers and things of that nature.
Very good. All right. Uh, before we consider the request, we need to consider whether or not it's a new request. So, um, what I'd like to do now is pull my fellow board members and see how they look at it. Ms. Scott?
I don't remember if I sat on this case, but I don't know if just removing the sales makes it a totally different case because it's, it was sales and storage and now it's just storage. I would, um, I'd still, to me seems like it's, there were multiple parts of the same case before and he's still proposing at least half of what he was before. So I'm, I'm not sure it's a, a new case.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah? Uh, I think it's a new case. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's, um, materially different. I do think I sat on it. So I, I deem it to be, uh, new.
Um, you know, I just pulled up the minutes. I just searched for sales in the document. I don't see any reference to sales, but you know, I don't, I don't think that, that was, that was material. The fact that he talked about sales then and he's not now. It's, it's materially the same thing. He wants to store stuff there without a building.
Very good. Um, it looked like much the same appeal to me. I did sit on the other case and it, the, my recollection is the board denied because it was, there was nothing particular about the, the land or the configuration of things that, uh, suggested that a variance was appropriate or that a hardship had been visited, even though the individual owner may be suffering hardships for other reasons. So I think I would be inclined rather than to go through the whole hearing, not to view it as a new case. Uh, we need a motion one way or the other and we'll see how it shows out. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to find that this is not a new case and dismiss it without a substantive hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right. We'll, uh, take a vote then. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Monahan?
No.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Uh, the board finds that the case is not materially different from the case that we heard and denied before, which case we will not take up the request for variance, uh, in, in particular. That will bring us to our next case this evening, which is case twenty five, twenty one, Shaw's Supermarket for NSM Investments LP. The applicant wishes to install an additional building sign on the north facing facade and request a variance to Article twenty eight, six, nine, eight table of maximum sign dimensions for non-residential districts to allow the addition of a nineteen square foot sign to the northerly building frontage where not conforming two hundred and seventy four square foot sign already exists, resulting in total building signage on the northerly building front of two hundred and ninety three square feet, when the maximum building sign is allowed is two hundred square feet for property located at twenty, the Monte Drive in the GWP Gateway Performance District. Do we have someone who would like to speak for Shaw's with us this evening?
Yes, you do, Mr. Chairman. My name is Douglas Boyce and I work for Bailey Sign Company in Westbrook, Maine. And we are Shaw's agent, uh, and the company that would, uh, install the, uh, wall sign in question for this application. Should it be?
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes, I do, sir.
Would you fill us in on why you believe the variance is appropriate?
Uh, yeah, I will first give you a look, just a little bit of background about the, about the variance. And then if you'd like, I can, uh, uh, recite the, the narrative of the variance, uh, tests, uh, in the ordinance.
Well, if you keep the background brief, we'd be happy to hear it, but.
Very good, very good.
The ordinance is really what we're interested in.
Great. Well, Shaw's is amongst, uh, many retailers who are implementing, uh, online ordering and customer pickup without having to enter the, uh, the premises. And if you've done much of your family's retail shopping or your own, uh, you've probably seen this at, at several locations, uh, throughout your community already. Uh, I visited a couple myself, uh, when I was visiting Concord last weekend. Um, so Shaw's is a little late getting into the game, but they are, uh, as a company, uh, going to implement, uh, what their, their program, they're naming, naming it drive up and go. Uh, at Walmart, it says pickup on the building. At Hanaford, it says Hanaford to go. Shaw's is drive up and go. Uh, so the signage is, the signage is based around that, uh, logo, if you will, uh, or that wording. Um, there are fifty or sixty, all of, most all of the Shaw's stores in, in northern New England are in the process of implementing this program, uh, this calendar year. And we at Bailey Sign are working on, uh, getting approved, soliciting approvals where required, uh, for the signs. And our role will be, in addition to getting, getting the approvals to, uh, fabricate and install the, uh, the wall signs. Uh, there is additional signage that's going in the parking lots, uh, to indicate the parking spaces dedicated to the drive up and go program. Uh, that is not, uh, something that we'll be, uh, we'll be doing in, install on, but it is part of, uh, permitting process outside of this variance tonight. Um, so as you stated, the, 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 uh, purpose of the variance is that the existing store signage at Shaw's, uh, exceeds the current ordinance allowance of two hundred square feet for that face of the building. Uh, by quite a lot already. That was approved back in two thousand and five, uh, to have two hundred and seventy four square feet of signage, which is the, the Shaw's name brand, as well as the Osko Pharmacy, uh, uh, sign that sits, sits with the Shaw's sign. So in order that they implement the drive up and go program, uh, they'd really like to, like to be able to install a wall sign, uh, to indicate the presence of that program at this site to go along with other forms of advertising for this program. In this case, we're looking, looking at a, uh, a nineteen square foot sign, which is, which is a four foot diameter, uh, illuminated, uh, icon, a logo sign of, of a car. It's part of the, uh, submission package with, with the, uh, non-illuminated lettering of the word drive up and go, uh, beneath it. Uh, given that there is a lot of variability amongst the size, shape and architectural design of Shaw's buildings, uh, they've given us a menu of, of choices of how to, how to place the sign on the building, whether to use a horizontal or a vertical orientation of the sign. Um, but, uh, I, I think the, so they, they also provided us with, provided Bailey Sign with the sign drawing that is the colored graphic, mostly red and white, uh, that's part of the package. Uh, so they've just assigned, they've, Shaw's has told us where they want, where they want it, basically what to, to get, what we can, uh, given the, uh, variability of local sign ordinances in as many communities, uh, as we're, as they're doing business.
So is yours then the one with the lettering underneath?
That is correct.
The, the, uh, the graphic?
Yes. I don't know if Craig had a chance. At a late hour today, since I was there this weekend, I took a, I took a photo from the parking lot and had someone from the office superimpose the, the sign on the building, uh, in a graphic that, that would only have reached Craig this afternoon. I don't know if he had a chance to, has it with him and can display it, or, or if he had a chance to communicate it to any of your folks.
We have a photo with a sketch on it.
Yeah, that was something I had done. There was, again, that's not what was done, done today. But if you don't have it.
I don't think.
There's something that came in late in the, the day that I have not, was not able to afford.
That's okay. It was just, it was just a better representation.
Hold on, I, I can share a screen here.
So that makes it a little, little easier to see, uh, instead of having it hand scratched on there. Uh, so the sign is shown on that left-hand gable, uh, that, that's a forty eight inch diameter illuminated sign portion that the copy is beneath it is, the, the letters are actually quite small. Uh, and then the, uh, specifics of the sign are, are included on this drawing also installation and so forth.
Very good.
So as we, as, so if you'd like me to go through the variance criteria, I can do that.
Yeah, if you give us a brief rundown, we have read the app, but it never hurts to, uh, touch the high points.
Okay. Well, I did, I did misstate, misquote the original size of the sign, uh, which has been corrected by staff at two hundred and seventy four square feet. Uh, um, so as follows though, the proposed nineteen square foot drive up and go sign represents a modest eight percent increase in the overall sign area on the front of the building, increasing the sign area from now two hundred and seventy square, two hundred and seventy four square feet to be to two hundred and, uh, ninety one square feet. Sorry, two hundred and ninety three square feet. Uh, this is a reasonable amount of signage, given the building's three hundred feet of frontage and its distance from the facing street, which is Loudoun Road in this case, of, of five hundred, approximately five hundred feet. The proposed sign will inform the public that Shaw's is offering this new grocery pickup service at this location. And the sign location itself is proximate to the parking spaces that are designated and, and separately designed, uh, for this new service. Uh, sign regulations are intended to encourage effective use of signs as a means of communication while maintaining the aesthetic environment of the city. The proposed additional sign is intended to be more informative and to do so in an aesthetically pleasing manner. The resulting signage for the property will continue to reflect the commercial nature of the property while maintaining, while remaining harmonious with adjacent properties within the Gateway Performance District. Granting of the variance will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance because the ordinance cites promoting, protecting public safety, convenience and aesthetics. The proposed sign representing the new drive up and go service being offered will increase convenience to the public by enabling customers to get their groceries without entering the store. There'll be no adverse impacts to public safety or aesthetics resulting from the new program signage. The authorization of the variance will not be contrary to public interest because the variance will enable Shaw's to provide notification to its customers that grocery pickup is available at this location. As such, it is in the public interest to provide, provide this new signage. Authorization of the, or granting of the variance will, will allow the new sign to be installed without necessitating any modifications to the existing storefront signs. It would be an unreasonable burden to require Shaw's to remove or replace existing storefront signage to be fully compliant with the maximum sign area of two hundred square feet. Accordingly, granting of the variance would result in substantial justice. And lastly, authorization of the, of variance will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. The proposed sign in conjunction with the existing storefront signage is reasonable in size, does not detract from the aesthetics of the property. Granting of the variance will have no adverse effect on surrounding properties.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from the board?
Anyone?
No.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Very good. With that, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request for some excess signage above what the ordinance permits. We heard testimony that the size and configuration of the building makes the effect very, very small. Uh, why don't we start this one with Mr. Winters?
I just have a quick question for Craig. Um, if this was deemed a directional sign, would they need the variance or would that just be allowed as a matter of right?
Well, it's not a directional sign. There's specific definitions of directional signage and they may not con- uh, contain any logos or things. And they must be less than four square feet in area.
Oh, less than four square feet? Okay.
Yes.
So even if it, even if it was, didn't have any content that was, okay, then it was not even close. Size wise.
Correct.
Um, I think that it's a pretty reasonable use. I mean, it's, it's a large lot. It's, it's in a very commercial area. I don't think the sign will, um, i- it's a pretty minor increase in their total signage. And it, I think it will, you know, reasonably help their customers. And it's pretty consistent with, you know, what all the other retailers similarly situated are doing. So I, I'd be inclined to approve it.
Mr. Monahan? We, we need your mic.
Yeah, I agree with Andrew. I don't think it's, I think the, the building can handle it. This, um, uh, and if it's gonna help people maneuver their, in a parking lot, know they're in the right spot. I think there's some, um, benefit there as well. So I'm inclined to support it.
And Laura?
Um, I agree. I think it is a small enough sign on a very large facade of a building that it'll have a minor impact and it'll be helpful to the customers. So I'm inclined to agree.
Nick?
I agree with, uh, with all of the, the members of the board.
As do I. Would anyone care to make a motion?
The move to approve the variance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The move been seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? In that case, we'll go around the room one more time. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted. And that brings us.
I'd like to thank you very much for all that, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your services. Thank you all for your service to your community too. And that, that also goes for, for staff who work pretty hard on things.
Thanks very much. Uh, next case is twenty six, twenty one, Barlow Signs for Northway Bank. The applicant wishes to install a twenty seven point one two square foot three standing tenant sign and request a variance to Article twenty eight, six, nine, C two, to allow a setback from the front property line of zero feet, where a minimum setback of five feet is required from any lot line for property located at one nineteen North Main Street in the CU Urban Commercial District. We have someone here for Barlow Signs.
Yes, we do. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Brandon Courier from Barlow Signs, uh, here representing, uh, Northway Bank at one ninety North Main Street.
Would you, uh, swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes, I do.
Would you fill us in then on why you believe the sign variance is appropriate?
Absolutely. Uh, so I am here tonight, uh, seeking relief for a zero foot setback, uh, while five foot is allowed. Uh, in this unique situation, uh, the city has a row of two feet, uh, into the Northway parcel.
By row, do you mean right away?
Yes, I'm sorry, right away, uh, to clarify. Um, with the space allowed, uh, it is almost impossible, uh, to have a sign there that fits with scale, uh, of the building. Uh, when designing the sign, we took into consideration, uh, how large and tall the previous one was, uh, and how it covered up the aesthetics and architecture of the building. Um, so we actually reduced the size, uh, compared to the previous one, uh, by a significant amount. Um, we lowered it, uh, we lowered the overall height, uh, made it compact, uh, while also continuing to have a better, a better visual effect, uh, for the wayfinding public. Even though the request is minimal, um, this will help maintain the corporate identity, uh, from site to site and aid, uh, attracting new and existing customers to this location. Having this waiver, uh, for setback, uh, will have no negative effects, uh, on the public, uh, nor neighboring businesses, uh, as they are already in a business, a business friendly district. Thank you.
Welcome. Uh, this is, so this sign is replacing a Merrimack County Savings Bank sign?
Uh, yes, that is correct. Um, so in the top right-hand corner, you will see, uh, two existing wood poles. Um, that is not going to be structurally sound, uh, mostly for any sign. Um, so what we will be doing, uh, is removing those and the existing base in the ground, uh, and then replacing it. uh and then replacing it with a new, uh with a single uh steel pole that this sign uh sits over the top of.
And did you say the new sign is smaller than the existing sign or the same size?
Yeah, it's actually smaller. Um, so the existing sign um was almost eight feet wide um and at least that high. Um, I don't have a height dimension, because that sign was removed when we went to do the survey. Um, but doing a Google drive-by, um the height was definitely higher uh than the width. Um, and as if you're familiar with that location, uh that sign did cover up some of that front porch when driving. Uh, so as I mentioned, uh we we reduced the the height, the overall height uh to be able to see that building, as that's a beautiful front porch there.
Very good. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question. If it actually met the five-foot setback, would that sign be almost flush with the building?
Yes, it would be on top of the um, the railing.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Very good. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition? Any comments from Code Enforcement?
No, nope, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request for a variance for a front yard setback for a sign. We heard testimony that without the variance, the sign cannot go in front of the building. Starting with Ms. Scott, what are your thoughts?
I think it's a reasonable request. It's actually a smaller sign that than what was there before. And to actually meet the requirements, as the applicant stated, it would, the sign would pretty much be into the railing of the building, so by having the only the, the zero setback, it gives room around the sign for maintenance um and uh for the sign and the building, so I'm inclined to agree.
Nick?
I I agree, it's uh, it's it's smaller than what it was there originally. There's not much room to maneuver in the front there, uh and I'm inclined to support it.
Yeah, I agree with what Spence said.
And Andrew?
Yeah, there's actually, that area is is a little bit of a hazardous area. There's a lot of traffic, there's you really need signage, because tons of cars are looking for businesses, and then we've, this is pretty similar to the Nicholson Law Firm um variance that we granted a couple of months ago, um where, you know, there was no way to put the sign other than in the setback, so I I definitely agree.
I agree with my colleagues. Uh, I'm in support of a variance. Should anyone make such a motion, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Moved to second, is there any further discussion?
Let Jim have the second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All right, one more, one last time this evening, we will go round the rosy. Mr. Winters?
Aye.
Mr. Monahan?
Yes.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the variance is granted. And that concludes our agenda for this evening. Um, is there any other business to come before us, Craig?
I just wanted to say thank you very much uh for everybody for taking your time this evening, and I'll be probably seeing you guys soon. Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome.
No, I, I don't.
Look at the minutes from last week, approve those.
Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes, and you added a, um, I have a question, uh Craig, about Champney. Did you ever get in touch with them?
Yes.
What happened?
Um, they didn't bother to pay attention to their hearing date. Um, they didn't bother to pick up their notice in the uh mail, um and just missed it.
They get another, is there any way for them, them to get another crack and they reapply, or they?
No, we, we, they, they would have to, they can reapply. But, you know, we went through all the expenditure of the time, money, and cost of uh notifying everybody and did all the work, so, yeah, they have to, the hearing was set, and they missed it. They can reapply, yeah, nothing, no action was taken on it, so.
This is different from the way we handled the Arndt case, right?
I don't remember the Arndt case.
Steve Arndt, he he didn't show up for the meeting and we, we, uh, we, I think we recessed the case to the following month.
I really don't remember at all. It's all, each case is unique anyway, so.
Uh, move approval on the minutes. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? We'll do this on a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries.
Well, I'm gonna abstain, because I wasn't at the, I uh was only there for part of the meeting, so.
Well, then you can only abstain from part of the vote.
Yeah, they don't let me get half votes or quarter votes, so I'm gonna abstain.
Right.
You can pay the same amount.
I guess we're done for the evening. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
And a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, guys.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you. See you next month.